Okay. We'll bring this meeting of the Mayor Board of Commissioners for November the 12th to order. Can I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mayor Marion, he wants, he sends his, well, I guess you'd say condolences that he can't be here, he's traveling, and so he won't be with us tonight.
Okay.
Last minute.
Here.
Commissioner Braun?
Here.
Commissioner Pierce?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Let the record show that you're number one.
Can I also say, oh, for the record, that Mayor Marion is excused tonight because of work.
Okay. Can we do the pledge of allegiance?
He excused himself.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Even though we're a day after Veterans Day, could we observe a moment of silence tonight for all veterans past and currently serving? Thank you. Public presentations, we have none. We have no business meeting items. Citizens input. We have, anybody signed up to talk tonight, say anything? We've got six people here and nobody wants to tell us what a great job we're doing. We appreciate it.
I'll sign behind him.
We're gonna write you in, Bill. You're a write-in tonight.
Thanks, Billy.
Okay. Staff reports. Chief.
Good evening, all. I'll try to be quick because I had quite a few things on my list to talk about. From last week, last town meeting, I spoke about two audits that we underwent. I'd like to announce that the first one with the National Guard went well. We were found to be compliant. That means we have all the products and they are up and running to the standards of the National Guard. In the second audit, the Criminal Justice Information Systems, they come in and look at our files, they look at how we secure our files, digital, in a digital format, and they also look at fingerprint cards. We were in compliance, however, they suggested that we purchase a fingerprint machine, which, at one point, the last time I looked into it, was about $20,000 a few years ago. I suggested that they provide us with a grant, and until then, we'll continue to submit fingerprint cards. The only issues they brought up with the fingerprint cards were penmanship. A couple letters looked like sevens, and we work, we will work on that, correct that, and we'll continue to submit our fingerprint cards in the old-fashioned way until the state or national government decides to buy us a machine. And that's the stance that I pretty much gave them. The Governor's Office of Crime Control and Prevention has awarded us $17,000 to purchase some in-car cameras for the police department fleet. This will be in addition to the body worn cameras, which will give you a full perspective now of the police officers gathering of evidence for traffic stops or any type of incident that they're responding to. It will show you the nature of their response and sync with the body cam, so now you get the officer's perspective along with the view from the vehicle. The state aid for police protection grant is due on the 15th. Ours has been submitted, and hopefully that award will come sometime next year or later this year. The Cecil County Chambers First Responder Dinner is this Thursday. We will be represented with, represented with an officer, and I believe many members of the board will be attending that. It's a great event to recognize the law enforcement and first responders from Cecil County.
They're supposed to meet at 4:30, right?
Yeah.
Yes. The officers made 14 arrests in the last two-week period of adults, one juvenile for assault, and made 66 traffic stops during that time period. We also had several hours of training that were also conducted during that time, and we are complete our training for 2019. So, with that being said, that's my report unless there's questions.
Chief, how did Halloween go? We have any incidents that night? Any children hurt or any?
Mischief Night was, mischief night, I'd like to say it was quiet, I don't want to jinx us for next year, but if you knew the history of the town of Rising Sun and Mischief Night, you would understand when I say we had nothing. I mean, zero. Not one egg thrown is a miracle. Unfortunately, I'm probably setting myself up for next year when we get bombarded from all directions by eggs, toilet paper, and whatever else, outhouses. I've actually even spoke to the gentleman about the outhouse prior to Halloween, and he said, "I'm not doing it because all the fun is gone now." It's like, well, people still like to see it in town, but he just didn't want to do it. So, no incidents at all on Halloween.
I think even, the weather held out and it was pretty successful, I think. I gave out a lot of candy. I was happy to do it.
You know, Rising Sun is a unique community because you get people from all over, not just the citizens of Rising Sun. They come from Southern Pennsylvania, Northeast, Perryville, Port Deposit, Connaughtingo.
It's because we give good candy.
Because you all give good candy. No, because the houses are in clusters and they can walk to, which is great, but it's, for the residents, it's a huge expense. But with that, that's my report unless there's more.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Town Administrator, you have anything to?
Yeah, the first thing I want to do, talk about was the paving. The 2019 paving program is up and running. It had a little bit of a setback today because of the weather and yesterday Veterans Day. As posted on our Facebook page, they're starting on Don Drive, and they're gonna do, from Don Drive, from Ryan Drive, up to the connection to the county road access area there. They're taking care of a lot of bad rolled curving in that area. We did have an issue today that resident, a resident had called in about, that they were, they tried to get in there real quick to do some cleanup of some of their forms, and they probably were a little bit lacking on flaggers because they thought they were gonna be in and out really quick, and it did create a little bit of confusion, but we had our public works department go down there and chaperon them for a little bit to get it under control. There is a dirt pile on Don Drive, but it's a little bit further up, and it shouldn't create any kind of sightline issues that we had had earlier today. After they are done on Don Drive, they are going to be heading over to Walnut Street to do from Main Street 273 here to the area roughly in the area of James United Methodist Church down past the post office. There's a lot of curving in sidewalk that's gonna be repaired under these projects as well. After that, and we timed this deliberately, the next project is the Valley View development, but we didn't want to run the risk of the timing of being half in the Valley View development and not in the Valley View development during Thanksgiving, so we timed it. So, we'll do Don Drive and Walnut Street, and then jump into Valley View immediately after the Thanksgiving holiday. It should be done, I believe, the first or second week of December. That's gonna include a little bit of sidewalk work, but a lot of basically road restoration and repaving. As we have done in the past, we're gonna need cooperation from the residents there because we don't, we, we're not gonna be shutting the entire development down at one time. It'd be just like we did a couple years ago when we re-lined the parking spaces. We'll do the development half at a time, so we're gonna need people to be a little bit patient about cars parking in front of their houses and stuff like that. And then, the police department and our public works department, in addition to the contractor, will be giving notification out in advance. As we get a little bit closer to that, we'll also start putting some information out on Facebook. So, we just ask everybody to be patient. It's a tight area to try to do that kind of work down there, but over the years, residents have been complaining and rightfully complaining about the condition of the road. We're making an attempt to put a whole new road down in there. We just need some patience from the residents, and it's, it's not gonna be easy to get into that small area and do all the work if we don't get cooperation from the people down there that are living with their vehicles. Aberdeen Federal Credit Union is getting underway to do the renovations over there. Commissioner Pearson, if you saw today and the team-
I got this.
I'd say, you, I, as I said, every once in a while, since you're Public Safety Commissioner, I want you to be in, to see some of the reviews that are done, and as you can see, that review was rather interesting.
Yeah.
The position that they were taking compared to what the code requirements were. So, they, they should be up and running, starting the renovation in there soon. The car wash, you saw a lot of progress in the car wash over the last couple of months, a lot of activity. You, now, it's gonna appear that there's not as much activity, and it's only because of massive amount of wiring and plumbing that has to be done inside the building. It's gonna look like maybe nothing's going on there, but it is running fast and furious. The last I spoke to them about a week ago, they're expecting, they're hoping to open shortly after the first of the year, I believe, mid-January. If not, it'll be closer to the, you know, February and March in there if they don't have any setbacks. But they're doing an excellent job down there. That's a good example of Mr. Temple, I think I said at the last meeting, he should be commended. He's taken the project on himself, and he's put a lot of care into the stuff that they're doing down there, and they are, they are doing it well within code, and they're putting a lot of care and preciseness into what they're doing down there. The new house on Walnut Street, that's another example for people to get familiar with the way these things happen. When you're digging the foundation and putting the footers and the forms in and framing it, you see a lot of activity. Now you get into maybe a 45 to 60-day period where it might look like it's slowing down. It's not. You just have to get the electrician, the HVAC guy in there, the plumbing guy, the fire sprinkler guy in there, and they all have to work together, and they don't all work at the same time. So, when you drive by the house on Walnut Street that's being built, don't think that there's nothing going on there just because the outside doesn't change. There's a lot of stuff that's gonna be happening on the inside there. The other thing that I wanted to update you on, and we've talked about this in the past in our budget process, and it sounds insulting, and I don't mean any disrespect to the state agencies, because environmental concern should be everybody's concern. The health and safety of the Chesapeake Bay is nothing to take lightly, especially in the state of Maryland. Unfortunately, they come up with these regulations and they are unfunded mandates, and we are now looking at roughly, you know, anywhere from maybe a $25,000 to $40,000 expenditure to bring the town into compliance with the stormwater management requirements. That is something that only the county had to do in the past, but it's slowly trickled down to local municipalities, so we accounted for that in our budget, but we didn't know exactly what it was going to be, so that's why we're estimating anywhere from about $25,000 to $40,000 to bring the town into compliance with the MS4 reporting, so we're gonna get underway with that. I want to thank Judy Melton and Linda Owens and Deana Osborne for all the work they've been doing in the financial transfer program that we've been doing. As we know, we went from having 99% of the accounting and finances being outsourced to a third party. We have brought that big back in-house, and we haven't brought it back in just at the status quo. We brought it in with a lot more robust possibilities and reporting capabilities on it, and it's, it's just been a long tedious process that especially Judy Melton has put a lot of time into getting that under control, so I want to thank her and the staff for doing that. I also want to send kudos to the public works department. The public works department, you saw one of those reports that I gave you last week. I got another one in today that I didn't get a chance to send you yet, but the public works department is really starting to diversify some of the services that they are providing to the town. They've gotten very aggressive about guardrail replacements. Grant Coats has done a good job at securing pricing and opportunities to replace the guardrails, not only in the, in the municipal parking lots that's been bent up for a long time, but he's also getting prices to install guardrails around the fire hydrant down there at North Hills Drive or Road, I'm not sure which one it is, that the county's asked us to put. They don't like the bollards that we put there, they want us to put a guardrail around it, so Grant's done a great job at doing that. We've also caught up on a lot of repairs that have been lagging for a while. We've had some gate repairs at the sewer plant. One of the garage doors, doors down at the public works garage was giving an issue, and we're also, you've heard me talk about it in the past, we're also, Grant and I are exploring opportunities in which to potentially bring in staffing that would enable us to do all of our, a lot more of our vehicle maintenance that we are doing right now. If you provide the right equipment, there's no reason why our people can't rotate tires, change, you know, oil filters and oil and stuff like that. So, Grant has really embraced that idea, and we're putting our heads together to come up with a strategy to do that. Commissioner Braun will probably bring it up under her report, but we had a, a little demonstration the other day that Grant put together with Commissioner Braun on doing some, I don't want to call them patching, but dealing with some uneven sidewalks, so I'll leave the rest for Commissioner Braun to talk about that. The public works crew has also done a lot with yard waste, and the last thing I wanted, the last two things I want to talk to you about is Infomark, which we brought on board, has already reached out to Chester Water and has established communication with them. As we talked about, the state of Maryland has given the town of Rising Sun minimum requirements in which to test the water quality, and this elected body has always taken the position from day one that we don't want to do the minimum, we want to go above and beyond. We, we want to have a water system that we know that we have covered all the bases, and sometimes it's just like a building code. A building code is nothing but a minimum code. It doesn't mean you're gonna get the best house ever built, it just means that that's the minimum that somebody could build to. Well, again, not to be disrespectful to the environmental requirements, but we just want to go above and beyond, and that's one of the things that happened a couple months ago when we found some anomalies in our water system. They were not life safety issues, but they were issues that were trending in a direction that we didn't want to be reactionary, and the way to do that is to get very robust in the testing that you are doing and do it more often and look for more things. So, Infomark coming on board, as they gave you guys the presentation before, are gonna help us take a huge leap forward in ensuring water quality for our residents. The other thing I wanted to update you on is, believe it or not, the sewer plant is approaching, you know, four years of age. It's pretty much been up and running since 2014. It's been doing things. Machinery has been working, although we didn't officially bring it on board until 2015. We ran the lagoon in the sewer plant at the same time to make sure there weren't any issues. The point being, that is a very heavily-used, you know, industrial mechanism that's going on there, which means you're gonna have a lot of wear and tear, and we're getting out of the honeymoon stage with the sewer plant, and we're starting to have wear and tear on pumps. We, we have provided for that in our budget, but almost on a weekly basis, we're having repairs done, pumps pulled, things updated. Fortunately, we've got a good relationship with MES that are keeping us up to date on all that stuff and staying ahead, but that's, we're seeing an increase in cost in the sewer plant simply because of the wear and tear of it. It's nothing to be alarmed about, just wanted to let you know that the honeymoon's over, you know, with the sewer plant, and that can be my report.
Thank you. We'll into staff reports now. Commissioner Pearson?
Well, the only thing I have is, when it comes to Halloween, the town really doesn't have a say on what day it is. It's generally October 31st. There was a lot of problems out there. Are we having it, are we not having it? The only thing we provide for Halloween is additional police protection and availability. That's, that's our only commitment. I mean, people wanted us to make a decision, and there's really no decision. It's, it has to be up to the parents. If you want to bring your child out in a terrible rainy night, that's your decision. The town has no real jurisdiction or say over it, so please understand, we weren't just trying to avoid you, it's, what, everything we say we're going to do will be wrong to somebody. Fortunately, the weather held out, and the kids really nailed the candy, and things worked out well. Next year, you know, if, if this looks like it's gonna be, maybe we have to make a decision. You know, if we're not going to do it this night, it will be done that, this next particular night. But the question arose also of making it like on a Saturday night either before or after Halloween. That takes the fun of Halloween out of it. You know, we, we have our spooktacular where you've got a chance to wear your costumes and bring your, your children out and all, and, you know, that's a couple of weeks ahead. I don't foresee us changing our, our plans in the future for how we're going for the actual celebration of Halloween. That's all I have.
Commissioner Warren?
I mean, just to actually back up what Commissioner Pearson said, I mean, we don't have any legal authority to regulate Halloween. You know, and it's, and honestly, if people want to go trick-or-treating 365 days a year, we really can't stop them. People probably won't give them candy on any day but Halloween, but, you know, at the same time, I mean, it's just, it's, it's just not a government issue. It's, it is a matter of, it actually would probably fall under a First Amendment issue. It's not solicitation for business purposes, so we can't regulate it. So, I don't see, I mean, the whole idea that any town was gonna regulate Halloween is, I think any town that does is really proceeding at their own peril. That's just, you know.
Wouldn't there also the talk, if the governor has declared-
If it's a state of emergency, it's different because-
Because of a severe weather event, we could do something then.
Right, because, well, under a severe weather event, people were walking on town right-ofways and driving on town streets and stuff, and we can-
Couple of years back, when Hurricane Sandy was coming up, we backed it off.
But there was a state of emergency declared, and that's entirely different. It's, it's not that you're regulating trick-or-treating, it's that you're telling people that they can't go out on town right-ofways effectively. I mean, honestly, during that, if people wanted to walk door-to-door across their yards, I don't think we could've stopped them legally.
No.
So, anyway.
I think that was, that was the discussion we had, that if we were to change-
Yeah.
-because of a weather event, not just rain, but if it was a nor'easter or really bad weather, then something like that.
And I gotta tell you, when I was a kid, rain would not, rain never stopped me from, and I, I didn't live in a town, I lived in a rural area, rain never stopped me from walking miles from door-to-door to the six houses I got to trick-or-treat to, to get a bag full of candy. Good thing is, only six houses, they all gave me a handful. So, anyway, on the parks and rec front, actually, I don't have a whole lot to report. We have a couple of things we're working on at Veterans Park in the way of drainage, and one of the Eagle Scout projects there has started. We're on kind of the final phases of the trail system in Veterans Park, so once this boardwalk that's under construction now is completed, that should be all of them, and it's a matter of now putting down probably stone paths from bridge to bridge, boardwalk to boardwalk, and everywhere in between. So, that'd be the last step really over there for the kind of intra-park transportation network that we're working on, if you want to call it that. So, and then, the other thing working on, we found what may be the deed for the rails trails, so I'm gonna try and get some time tomorrow morning to meet with the people I need to, to see if we can get that advanced forward, so I might wait down the road, so. And that is all I have for tonight. I don't think there's anything other than the winter extravaganza coming up in December, but I think we still have some meetings before that, so to remind people. Thank you.
Commissioner Braun?
Oh, yes. I did attend a demonstration that the town administrator alluded to. It had to do with straightening out a piece of a sidewalk that had become raised, and the demonstration was just leveling that end of the, of the block that became raised, therefore eliminating a dangerous condition. We have not discussed how we're gonna integrate that into the work that we're doing on the sidewalks, but it'll probably come into use and become handy at some point.
That's it. Calvin, you have those pictures I asked you. I got a few things I want to touch on quickly. Got some video presentation to go with. Don't look so excited over there, guys. That's not a very good picture I took, but, you know, the winter extravaganza's coming up. Commissioner Warnock and the mayor have got some really cool things planned. I think this is the first time we've done this. Didn't you guys guarantee at least some snow?
No.
Yeah, they did. Some snow from Town Hall. Trust me.
On that note, we're rescheduling Christmas to January 25th to make this chance of snow more likely.
So, I wanted to, since Travis's not here, I wanted to mention that, still a little bit of thunder. Calvin, what's, what's the next one you got up there? Another one. I want to congratulate our mayor on winning Best Elected Official again, and I think, is this three years in a row?
At least, or at least two. I think he might have been a runner-up.
I think he's been number one, I think he's been number one three years in a row, and he was like, three, one year, and two the second year.
Yeah, so congratulations to our mayor, because that's, that's quite an accomplishment, and Commissioner Warnock and I were kidding around that we think Trump's gonna have the President of the Ukraine investigate this, see what's going on there, you know, three, four years in a row, and he's beat out all the other municipalities and everything, so congrats to our, our mayor. That's something else. What's our next one up there? This is a, a bad picture of a plastic bag that was left on my door last weekend. I don't know if anybody else got one?
Sure did.
The yellow plastic bag? Did you get one, Augie? All right.
Some of the Boy Scouts.
Yes. This is from Cub Scout Pack 28. They walked around all the developments and left these plastic bags for scouting for food, and they're asking us, you know, Thanksgiving's coming up, to donate some non-perishables, there's a list on there, and they will be picking them back up this coming weekend. I think they said, "Have them out on your doorstep by 10:00 a.m. on the 17th." So, we've got a big, you know, we've used our scouts in this town for all kinds of things. Dave's used them for work in the trails. They do, they do a lot around here, so let's, let's help them out, let's load up some bags. If you didn't get a bag and you want to donate something, contact Cub Scout Pack 28. Calvin, what else we got up there? Oh, another one of our favorites. This was just right across the street, and I think a couple of other businesses in town, one favorite. So, they're Best Caterer, Your Personal Chef, which is right across the street, so that's, that's a big deal for us here in town. We've got a lot of things going on. Our Chamber of Commerce has got a lot going on, and some good things happening in this town. Couple of other things I want to touch on. To me, one of the worst days we ever have is when we set the clocks back one hour. That just passed, so make sure you check your batteries and your smoke detectors and your carbon monoxide detectors. Don't forget about that. Also, we're getting this cold snap here. Winterize your house, pull your water hoses in, disconnect them. We have several good contractors and companies in town that you can reach out to to service your furnaces, your fireplaces, pot-belly stoves, your pellet stoves and everything, goes along with your carbon monoxide service. What else did I have here? What else did I have here? Also, we have some good, you know, we, we just recently, I think one thing we need to talk about, I didn't never met the guy. It was very popular. When you're talking about servicing your cars and getting your cars ready for winter, you know, with this cold snap and all, we recently lost Tom Roger, Rogers, who had the shop across the street behind Western Auto. He was, you know, like I said, I never got to meet the guy, but it seems like he was well-known and well-loved in this town, and a lot of people are going to miss him. A lot of people depended on him to maintain their vehicles and do things such as winterizing them, getting ready for this cold weather. So, our condolences go out to his family, but we have some other good businesses and good mechanic family businesses in town that if you need your car serviced, your motorcycle serviced, any of that stuff ready for wintertime, they can take care of it. And like I said, don't forget, we got Thanksgiving coming up. There's a lot of good programs going around, and then Mayor Marion and Commissioner Warnock have a lot of great things planned for Carol Singh and Winter Extravaganza coming up this year. So, that's all I have on my report. We have some upcoming meetings, a Planning Commission meeting Monday, November 18th, 6:30 p.m. Our next town meeting is Tuesday, November 26th, 7:00 p.m. Another Planning Commission meeting, December, Monday night, December 2nd, 6:30 p.m.s. And like I said, a couple of upcoming events. Our Winter Extravaganza, first ever, Saturday, December 7th at 5:00 p.m., and our Carol Singh, as always, Tuesday, December 3rd, and-
6:00 p.m.
6:00 p.m., yeah. And then, of course, Thanksgiving is not that far away, and Town Hall will be closed that day. So, if any, don't have anything else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, meeting adjourned.